Stops now.
Yeah.
And I have this ashtray, it's a hundred and thirty millimeters.
Looks like you're gonna get.
That was like on the front few inches of the chair, I thought it was gonna go forward.
Yeah.
Think I did finally get it adjusted.
Here's the agenda.
I'm sharing.
I was gonna say.
Shane and I are like right atop each other.
Holy cow.
Well, Medesha can share, you and I can share, because Medesha.
I guess we're doing this first.
Oh.
Don't you know?
What kind of be.
There she is.
Come on Ian. We got produce for you. Oh, oh no. Not good out of your way here.
We're ready to go. So, uh.
I'll share with you.
We have a lot to go through, so we'll just go ahead and jump right into it. So, uh, we're gonna start with Shane and a couple of street projects we've potentially got upcoming.
Okay, so we just wanted to kind of go over a couple of projects that we, we have funding for. The funding is a little bit, little bit different, we can talk about that, but that's what, this, this spreadsheet here is from the, is from the MPO's M-Tip program. And every year they ask us for, um, roadway type projects that we could put on the M-Tip. They have to be on the M-Tip, um, in order to, to, to be considered for funding from YDOT. So every community in the MPO, us, Mills, Evans, or Barnum, uh, City of Casper and the county, all have to put projects on this M-Tip. And a lot of these projects have been carried over for many, many years because we just have not funding for it. So, the MPO did approve actually three projects, well, it was actually a pot of money. Um, I don't remember the exact dollar amount, I want to say it was like four point six, four point five million. It was three point five. It was three point five, it's three, so there was, there was a lot of money that we used to finish the paving on the Memorial Way. So we allocated that and I think maybe that was four hundred thousand.
Yeah, right.
And, and that's been allocated instead. The other, the other portions at the time, we decided we would, we would utilize to do reconstruction of Lathrop Road, uh, from Curtis, uh, to where, to basically Craig Thomas. Um, and then the other pot, we had talked about the Texas Street Extension. And so we want to talk about those and I, we have these, on this spreadsheet, those are listed as projects E1 and, and E7 on the back of it. So it was roughly about a little over three million dollars that, that's out there for these two projects. So Chad wanted me to kind of present those projects tonight and what we were looking at and they kind of go, you know, they kind of fit together. So there were studies done, uh, we had studies done through the MPO for both the Lathrop Road project and. This first kind of has front and back to it. Um, this was from the Lathrop Road study. And the main reason we had Lathrop Road studied is because we know that there's an issue at peak times, um, at Lathrop Road and Curtis and trying to make a left-hand turn. And so the whole point of the study was to kind of evaluate the traffic, pedestrian traffic, and come up with a solution to help alleviate the traffic issues at Curtis and Lathrop. And I guess the ultimate recommendation was a roundabout right there. And nobody was real crazy about a roundabout for, for several reasons. I guess a main reason is just the cost. I mean, it would be a giant roundabout in order to get semi, you know, big truck traffic through it, off the interstate, through it and back around. So anyway, the second alternative that came up, which isn't quite as effective, but still, still takes care of a lot of the issues at that intersection, is to put in kind of a free right turn lane coming off of Curtis onto, um, Lathrop Road, and then be able to have a, a left, left turn lane and a right turn lane, um, on Lathrop, on the, on the Curtis. And so that's kind of, apologize, they did this as the exhibits that they put in, they didn't put a big one in the, in the plan, this is what the consultant put together. But it's just kind of an, an overall of what that would look like.
So when I. Run that by me one more time, I get confused sometimes. So you're gonna do a right turn off of, off of, um, Warming Boulevard onto Lathrop, right?
Yeah, heading north.
Heading north, yeah. Northbound traffic, alright, because Curtis got me kind of messed up.
Yeah, um, I know. Typically called Curtis there, but we all.
And then, so there'd be three lanes there?
There'd be three lanes, so it widens that throwdown, so, so the right turn traffic is just, can just go.
Okay.
And then there'd be an island, kind of a refuge island for pedestrians to cross and stand between, and then there would be a left turn and a right turn. So essentially there's three lanes, but it's, it's widened out quite a bit.
Because right now, currently there, it's kind of already like a left and a right turn, kind of sort of, but this is, would be more designated, is that what you're saying?
It would be widened out so you could stack more cars. Right now, I think it's wide enough that people do that, they probably squeeze in there, but this will be widened out longer so you could stack more cars in that left turn lane. So people that are trying to turn right wouldn't have to wait for the cars in front of them that are turning left. They could stack those, those cars in the left turn lane and then get in the right lane and try to make that.
I know the one, I know one, the day I almost got T-boned down there, it was, somebody had a trailer they were pulling, trying to turn right, and I was, were out far enough so traffic could be behind me, so I was in the center, basically, and he didn't have room enough to get in. And that's what. So when I tried to get out of their way, I was like dead meat almost, you know?
Okay. The other thing it does is by that dedicated right-hand turn into it, it's a big sweeping right, because if you'll see from the study, it was shown that the, a lot of the trucks, that street's so narrow, as they're making that right-hand turn, they're actually driving over top of the sidewalk.
Yeah, the off-track.
A sweeping right will give them more opportunity to turn in.
So it'll be kind of like Walsh's, where there's a lot more movement.
Um, yeah, except for there, there'll be, it'll be a little bit wider than what Walsh's.
Okay.
Because we've got the pedestrian, uh, refuge.
Okay.
In there between the right-hand turn.
Okay.
And so that's the major, I guess, change with, with the, with the reconstruction of Lathrop Road, other than right here at Warming Boulevard and Lathrop Road where we're making this widening. The rest of Lathrop Road, why it's not shown in the exhibit, is just a reconstruction of what's there, so nothing really different with Lathrop Road going up there.
So, and then how far does that go east then?
It actually goes to where, I don't know the exact, exact limits, I want to say it's around the Craig Thomas Boulevard, but when the developer came in and did, um, the Evansville Business Park, they reconstructed from Blackmore up to about Craig Thomas Boulevard.
Okay.
Going to that limit, it's right around there.
Which has covered the trailer, the trailer park that's there, right?
Like half?
Half of it?
Yeah, right in the middle.
I think it might actually go past, I think it might actually go to those entrances, I don't think they can.
Because that road is not in very good shape there.
Yeah, the, the point of it was to strip it and resurface it.
Okay.
Alright, bringing it up, okay.
So that's kind of a summary of, of, of the Lathrop Road project. Now, we, we estimated, uh, one point five million. Now, that was several years ago, and we noticed, we realized, well, we've known it was coming, but, uh, we just. We just, we just opened bids last Thursday for the Lathrop Pathway Project, and it is significantly over, over our estimate. Um, our estimate was six hundred thousand, and the bids came in, the low bid came in at, um, eight hundred and forty. Low bid has to get thrown out, YDOT reviewed the bids and low bidder didn't meet all the federal requirements, so the second bidder was nine hundred and sixty. So basically we're at three hundred and sixty thousand of a difference from our estimate two and a half years ago to where we're at today. And it's just the nature of what's going on right now. So we do have some options that we'll be bringing forward on that project, on, on what we can do, uh, to get that funded. To either get it funded, and one of our thoughts is to utilize some of the money that I just mentioned, um, to make up that difference and maybe not do on the other projects that we'll talk about, or to reject all bids and rebid it as a smaller project. So we'll be talking more about that. But I guess just by bringing that up, I mean, the bidding environment right now, our estimates are probably low.
The side of the project is concrete, correct?
Concrete, everything, concrete, asphalt, pipe, everything, everything.
So I, I guess my question is, so there's roughly a thirty percent increase on that project, so in the Lathrop side of it, is the asphalt maybe less than concrete in material?
So it may not be as big of a jump, because it doesn't include this side.
Asphalt's climbing too. And we actually, when we put Lathrop Road out to bid a month ago, we had a contractor call and ask our estimate, and they said, oh, you got plenty of money. And then we got calls the day before the bid that said, we can't believe the number, we're getting from suppliers. Originally, they, they thought. Things have changed drastically and even, even recently. So anyway, it kind of got off topic a little bit, but the other project that we had wanted to present tonight is the Texas Street Extension. There's two exhibits that go along with that, uh, KLJ did the study against the MPO. And the first exhibit is just kind of blank, it just shows kind of the right-of-way that the town already has, um, along that Texas Street Extension. And this would be, a lot of people are, you know, when you say Texas Street, they're thinking in town, but this would be an extension, extension of Texas Street from, um, Miracle Way, which is right there by where the old Applebee's is and the off-track bedding now, and taking it in front of the Murdochs, down behind the motel and behind the car wash and tying back into the highway. So that would be a line, we call it Texas Street Extension because it lines up with Texas Street across the way. So this first exhibit just shows the right-of-way is there for that, and it was preserved years and years ago. And the second exhibit is a conceptual design of how that road might fit in there to tie into Texas and into the highway. Um, it's a tight fit, there's a lot of, we've got water and sewer, sanitary sewer in there right now, and it's a, it's a great issue, but, um, consultants have, have put together a conceptual design that would fit in there. Um, and again, it was, so it was listed as one of the projects that we would use that MPO funds for, and, but in light of other things, it may be one to consider, but not.
What happens if you come out, you, I mean, we, we start there, but what happens if you come out on Evans? You know, we preface one of the asking. But some of the stuff I was talking to Chad and for about, anyway, in somewhere in our conversations, there's stuff he was asking about, you know, he, we were talking about some of this stuff, because I was just trying to learn what was going on. But one of the things that he said was, is he said YDOT, and you guys can probably discuss this with him, but, YDOT would be willing to put in a light if it came out on Evans, but not if it comes out straight onto Texas. Because he's, is what he said was, the lights are too, too close together, but if it's on Evans, it's far enough apart, so YDOT would pay to put in a signal light there. Which if we're gonna have traffic there would probably be a awesome deal.
I, I don't, I.
You haven't looked extensively at that, you would have to, I could, I mean, that definitely does make sense, yes.
Yeah.
Um, in order to get to Evans, we would have to get right-of-way from, right-of-way we don't have yet, um, from a private property owner here, because we can't come off. Evans actually lines up, um, with that new street, um, in front of Texas Roadhouse. But there is no way to get that off the hill and then go straight into Evans.
Okay, yeah, and, and he had mentioned that, that it would take a jog of some kind down there and you get, get to there, but, I mean, I just, I guess my thoughts were, is that long-term down the road, it would save a lot.
Yeah.
And I think, and I think you're, you guys is thinking is right on that, later both things, it's just a bad deal, and I don't. There is no real, without reconstructing everything and spending millions, I don't.
Well, and that's kind of our thought was with the, uh, that street is definitely in desire, dire need.
Right.
Um, to have something done to it, and, uh, with the cost overages and things like that, that's one of the things we've discussed that possibly, you know, the Texas Street, uh, project might be have to. We have to sacrifice in order to make something else happen.
I would agree.
Um, the other component piece of the Texas Street study that, uh, was also, uh, a key component to, uh, the design was, if you see up here at the top, it was actually creating a bus lane, um, where we could actually pull the bus off of the road and then have the bus stop there. So, um, if it is decided that this is one we try to forego in order to try to, uh, accommodate, uh, funding for the other project, I would like to look and see if that, that could still be brought in.
That would be.
Because when, uh, the bus stop was moved because of Chili's, um, we put it up there, um, at the top, uh, next to Texas Roadhouse, uh, back on Miracle. Um, but that was a temporary solution, so the landowner said that they're happy to do it, however, they are actively pursuing sale of the land. Um, and if they were to sell it, we would have to move the bus stop. So, um, that was an important component in this is to find a good, safe way to bring the bus stop down, uh, again. And I think they came up with a really good design, um, so. It would, right, put it right off the edge of the pathway, so it'd be easily, much more accessible, um, and really be just being able to get the bus out of the flow of traffic, um, was important.
And, and then I guess that the thing that, you know, you and I had talked about, and I think Chad would might have talked about it too, with, with running that thing off and onto the exit coming off of I-25, I guess that's pretty well a common deal.
Yeah, so that was actually, Shane, I'll let you go in, that was part of the study, it was looked at.
Okay.
Um, and it wasn't found as feasible, and it wasn't something that, my understanding that YDOT was. Yes, but, well, it was looked at, and there is a section of this study.
Yeah. One of, one of the things that, that Chad had said was, uh, what kind of the low guys on the totem pole is the traffic coming from south to north? Is more their concern in the stuff that's going north to south? So.
But I thi, I honestly believe that this would do wonders for that area.
It can hurt anybody, because it's gonna, there's gonna be more traffic.
This Texas Street thing, in going back to that study that was done, that was deep in correlation to this as well, to help flow the traffic. It, it would open this up to, for, more up for development. Um, I don't know that a stoplight is needed at Evans. You know, it is, these will develop with this, that would be your access point. I, I see where the interest of having a light would be down there, but. Having two lights like that, I can see they want to change speed limits all the way, so instead of that forty, probably get lower to a thirty all the way in Casper at that point.
Well, it's still, it's still forty now.
It is, but when you add that second light, uh, and having this, I don't think it would be advantageous for the. I just did this whole reading thing today on setting speed limits and how it's all goes in, so I can see that that would get thirty, so it would make sense to set it forty and thirty and forty, so then that would probably force this over here to be thirty all the way to Casper.
And it would take, you know, YDOT, um, lights, lights have, you know, big studies are involved before you put in a traffic light, and it has to warrant that light.
Yeah.
So if you don't have the traffic that warrants that light, it'll never get one anyway. And even, I hate to say it, but even, even before a warrant, just a study really gets involved, there's gotta be some major accidents before.
They took a lot, a lot of wrecks to get those stoplights.
I understand.
Yeah. I'm, I, I guess, you know, from what our conversation was, this, if you could use, like, that should be the consideration, is all I'm saying. Because if, and I think you're right, I think it'll generate traffic down there, and if we have the traffic down there like we have off of Volts and, and, uh, Western, that's gonna be.
Yeah, I don't know if it'll ever happen, to be honest with you, because we'd have to obtain a lot of land.
Yeah.
To get between there, um, and that is prime commercial real estate, so I don't know if they'll. But yes, absolutely, it, it's one of the things I actually, we looked really hard at, because to me, Evans Street going straight up over the hill to connect was the best idea. Um, but the grade is, it's so steep, um, I don't see it's feasible, and we don't have any.
With the Spur Branch thing, I think that's gonna fuel some hotel development, we've talked about that already. And that is a really essentially nice big piece of fairly flat land for that kind of stuff.
Well, and that's the other thing to keep in mind and mention is that, um, one, I don't believe we're gonna have the funding to perform this project with the way prices are coming in right now. Um, but potentially if we do have some of the other commercial projects, I mean, there may be opportunity then to drive road access and stuff as well. So, um, a lot of times those bigger projects will build a road.
Yeah.
So.
I was gonna say, on some of those site plans, for the really large projects, you can get roads done.
Right, right.
You can get, so. The Warming Business Council will fund if you've got a committed business, or, yeah, just call it business, committed business grant. If you've got a big business coming in, it's gonna put a bunch of employees, they'll fund a lot of infrastructure.
And it's unfortunate, although I do think that this would help.
Well, it can't hurt anybody.
Yeah, with, with the funding right now, unless we come up with some other ideas or other way of doing it, I'm not sure.
The other thing we wanted to present tonight, this, this is, this is something, this last exhibit, this is something that YDOT came to the town. YDOT, they, they have. They have jurisdiction on that frontage road, and they would really like to get rid of it. So they, they've came to us about an idea to close that frontage road off at Curtis, and then have an access coming, coming through the west off, I guess it'd be lined up with Missouri Street that's not built, and then have them, cutting across the medians and having access into Texas Street here. So then anybody using like the laundromat would have to come in off Yellowstone onto Texas and back onto the highway, and same thing with, with everything going west. They already got rid of the frontage road and saw the Smith's RV. Um, and we've all seen that people trying to turn onto that frontage road, going from two lane to one lane, it's a mess. So, so I think, you know, I think it'd be a good idea, um, to, to have that done. Um, and I think if we move, you know, if the town's in favor of it, I think YDOT will move forward and try to get that done on their, their time, I believe.
Yeah, that's, that's what Chad said, and they can actually, I think, have some.
Maybe, they told me two to three years. They told me to get into the plan.
From the conversations that I've had, it sounds like they're, they're like, they're willing to.
And that may be, they may be willing to adjust, because I know very much, um, their desire to get rid of the frontage road. And if this were to happen, what they would do is the remaining, uh, frontage road would then be turned over to the town and become the town's responsibility, so.
So is, is Lathrop Road our responsibility, must be our responsibility?
Yes, Lathrop Road is the town's.
But not the Warming Boulevard, once you get south of.
No, everything from, uh, basically the intersection right here forward is YDOT.
Is YDOT, okay.
So how, just closing the frontage road, how does that affect your people? It takes two seconds longer to get to like that house that we were coming to?
Yeah, we would essentially go down Yellowstone, turn onto Texas and just come back to it, I mean, it would take ten seconds, I mean. And honestly, from the traffic problems we have with the frontage road to begin with, I would much rather have this than keep the frontage road open, to be honest with you, right there at Curtis Street, because it's.
Oh yeah, oh yeah.
And far before YDOT ever approached the town about this, I know Chief Thompson had brought it to my attention with this desire. So, uh, it, it is something that, uh, I guess a lot of people have recognized as a deficiency, um, there in the road. Um, so this is an opportunity, if council chooses to, uh, move forward in negotiations with YDOT, um, for that to be done, uh, without a large expense to the town.
And honestly, it would probably clean up, like, no more responding to calls, I'm speaking for my clip. That intersection with the frontage road being there is already dangerous, especially when we're running emergent, because you have all kinds of traffic trying to get in and out in multiple different locations that are very close together. So if we close that off, then we just have to be on a controlled intersection at the stoplight. So it would actually make our responses probably, it would be less stressful.
Stressful, it'd be more safe for either us going through it. This intersection is why I purposely put the low-frequency sirens in our cars, because people don't pay attention. Why we haven't had more crashes there, I'm shocked.
Me too. The last, so when the last impact fund thing that we did, I was looking at traffic study stuff, because the wind towers are supposed to come through here, and this intersection, on average is eleven to twelve thousand vehicles in a twenty-four hour timeframe, and so it's like three point two million vehicles a year, and some aspect goes through here.
Along the lines of safety, um, we definitely, I'm sure everyone has seen, have an issue now with, uh, non-motorized traffic coming across here. Um, I can't tell you how many times I've seen now, granted it's cleaned up a little bit, but seen people here waiting to cross the street, um, standing in the sagebrush or something like that effect. So, um, this would allow a little pedestrian refuge there on either sides that people could wait, uh, in a nice clean area.
That, and have you seen the, the people in the motorized wheelchair right there too? Because I'm always like, maybe I should stop traffic so they could cross, you know what I mean, because I'm like, oh.
So this, I think, would help address all of those situations.
Would there be any left-hand turn lanes in the median on Yellowstone? So they're not stopped in the left line trying to go north on Texas North?
Oh, you're talking, yes.
Yeah.
So yes, they would, there would be.
I just want them to stop like.
Correct, no, there would be the pull-off in order to make that turn on.
Okay, I just didn't show it.
Yeah, especially just a simple. In fact, that actually on the, I think it is, I think it does show it on the Texas Street, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
So, so if council's, uh, amiable to moving forward with that, I would suggest that we would, uh, set some public hearings, get this open to the public, get their input, uh, before we. Yeah, I think so, so I think that's got all of those projects. Anybody have any other questions or anything about them?
Just one more. The, when you're coming north on Warming Boulevard and there's two lanes there. So is that eventually gonna be the left-hand turn only way? Or are we still gonna let them come across?
Well, there's really, I mean, that's something to discuss in this concept and design, because there really won't be a right-hand turn there, because we'd be closing off the frontage road.
Right.
And my honest recommendation would be to bump out that. And my honest recommendation would be to bump out that pedestrian into that area and just take. Then the northbound traffic would have a right turn only on Yellowstone. And then it would just be a single lane in the town because that also is a very confusing. Yeah, as much as we've tried to stripe that, um, it lasts, you know, four or five days and then it's gone because of the traffic.
And this is a little bit off the beaten path with what we're talking about. But, and I've talked to Mike and I've talked to other about it, uh, intersection over there by, uh, Butches. Freeline stop and a yield, like you, if you're coming. If you're heading south on Western. If you're coming.
T intersection.
But anyway, there's like three different things going on on there. And it seems to me that not only would it maybe slow the traffic down just a little bit. But that if that was turned into like a three way stop instead of. The way that it is now.
Part of the concern though is the yield going northbound, you don't want people stopping on those rare tracks.
Well, that's all fine again, but then put the stop the other way then.
But you can't because on the cross the way you've got.
The business. And not only that, but like being a driver myself, it's hard to stop and then make that right hand turn in first gear or second gear. When you're turning, you get what I'm saying? Okay, when you're across the tracks right there, Kamatsu's right where you're at. And I'm gonna turn to go this way to get filled up with whatever they have at the thing, silo. If I have to stop right there and then get started again to make that turn.
Yield, then if there's traffic, you're gonna have to stop anyway. Yeah. Because you can't make that, you can't make that swing.
I might.
Not in the truck, you're not.
Well, yeah, if there, well, if there's traffic going westbound on iron, the trucks have to stop at the yields.
But that's just something to think about. I mean, it's. I remember when I moved to Evansville, I'm going, what in the world is this? I thought maybe some signs had fallen down someplace.
I I've never had an issue with that intersection except for when the train comes in because then everybody gets blocked up and the first person guaranteed is gonna take a left. Well, it's definitely something to keep in mind.
Going back to this two projects. It seems, so in the Texas one, this almost seems like it's tied in with also getting rid of the frontage road. So if Whiteout takes care of this end of it, would that lessen the price tag for us to get this done on this end?
Possibly. I I mean, we're really gonna have to see where this stuff kind of comes into play. But possibly, yes, it's it's why I, Shane, I don't want to speak for you, but we really didn't really bring a lot of concrete stuff. Out on this right now because due to the current pricing, we have to go back and have some discussions and figure out what it is plausible to do and whatnot. And to be honest, none of it may work because right now, um, I mean, unless anybody has a difference of opinion, I don't think the town can. Foot the bill for the three hundred and fifty thousand dollar overage on the pathway. Um, if the Lathrop reconstruction comes in the same, uh, we'll have to find money. Um, if we can't do some moving of funds, we know it may not give you anything. Um, so that's the complicating factor right now is my prices are, um, we're not sure what we will.
So this entrance here where the daycare is. Safety traffic wise, I don't even know that that should be that way. Because I can see people trying to shortcut through the car wash. I think that would cause traffic, so if it just was a straight.
The problem is, is that is a road cur, even though it doesn't look like it, it is a road. So, um, that is the the problem with that area right there. And what they were trying to do with the conceptual design is just tie into what is currently planted as a road. But unless anybody has some serious concerns with all this, this would of course won't be, um, we're not making decisions tonight. So I guess I should start at the meeting with, uh, everybody understands that the work session is just a place to open and discuss all this stuff. No decisions are made, um, we're just, uh, able to freely discuss, uh, the current projects and all the decisions will come to a meeting.
I think the concept.
So, um, that's really the biggest thing is we wanted to get that to everybody and then, uh, we'll, uh, be going into discussions and just see what is plausible and what's not.
If you can rock Peter to pick Paul, I would say Lathrop Road and Lathrop Town, right, Eastmore. In my opinion, if you know some important things to be done and get the frontage road, I'm all for that, so.
And then we start the street or the sidewalk projects.
So the sidewalk projects, uh, we didn't plan on discussing tonight, but those are currently out for bid. So, um, we all will be hearing about how those come.
Projects might lend a good clue for you though for those types of construction projects.
I think it's unfortunate because. Not always the high one, but there it's been pretty close to my estimate. And a lot, a lot of time, like these, these, both of these grants, so Lathrop Pathway and the Sidewalk Project. I did my estimate with the with the grant application almost three years ago. That's how long it takes to go through the application, go through all the federal stuff, the environmental. And now here we are in an environment where prices are going up monthly, I mean, daily.
How long have those grants been for? Did they stay there for?
They they all have a term, uh, the sidewalk one ends in August. A lot of times you can ask for the term extension. But it's, it's kind of a weird thing that I know the grant agencies are all dealing with. I mean, so we always put in our cost estimate, we usually put in twenty percent contingency. Fifty percent anyway, I mean, and and it doesn't look good because it violates the number and you're trying to. Anyway, it's kind of a weird deal right now that. I guess number two on the agenda.
Next is the structural drawings for the new park. So, um, everybody knows, uh, we did receive a a grant for the for the new park last year. Um, the first step in this process is submitting the environmental review. Um, Shane had submitted the environmental review, uh, in early February. Um, and it sounds like we are just about ready to receive approval. So, um, now that, uh, we're passing that first hurdle. Um, we wanted to bring this up and get this out in front of, uh, council. Um, this was the first conceptual design, um, so, uh. Robert, uh, Chief Thompson, Janelle, myself and Shane have all met with Le- Leather's very, uh, quite a few times. Um, to try to work out a, uh. Concept and and design and and this was the, uh, first stab at that before, uh, everything kind of got put on hold. Um, so it will be, if it does free up now, um, it will be a rather, uh, escalated timeline. Um, so we'd be looking at having this in, uh, here next summer. Um, so it sounds like now with things moving forward, we wanted to get it in front of council, um, getting any thoughts and ideas on this. There's not a lot of, uh, room to make a whole lot of changes, uh, or at least time, I guess. Make changes, the timing will be quick if we're gonna get this out the bid, um, but we wanted to get it out in front of everybody, so. Um, the thought and idea around this was really, uh, more of a destination park. Um, and, uh, sticking with the the old west theme, um, that kind of fit in here. So it doesn't look like something that's just, uh, you know, planted somewhere else. Um, so it it, there's a lot of space here or a lot of room. Um, one of the important components of it was fencing, um, so there is a significant cost that goes along with this with the fencing. Um, but I feel really good that they did a really good job trying to capture, um, the the concept and idea. And really, I think it would be a great thing for the community. It, uh, brings, uh, a place for kids of all ages. You can see the younger section on the right as well as the the older section. Um, kind of separated there, um, but something that we don't have, uh, currently amenities in town. Um, so this would be something, uh, to entertain the kids.
What's the chances of a splash pad?
Uh, slim to none. We of course don't have water down there, um, so. Yeah, well, that you got a built in splash pad. So one of the other things that'll kind of lend to this, um, just since you brought up the splash pad. Is, uh, we were approached, uh, last year, uh, by, uh, from Casper, um, and some of the other communities that they're, uh. We're doing a joint effort, which is basically a Parks and Amenities, uh, master plan. Um, so the town joined in, um, in that master plan. And that plan is gonna be looking at basically the whole of, uh, the Casper surrounding area in the Toronto County. Really look at all of the amenities that are in the area and, uh, decide, you know. How they're spread out, where other amenities would go. And that was one of the things actually specifically brought up is, you know. How many splash pads do you need?
I cannot believe it.
So, um, but that was one of the things that this, uh, master build is gonna look at is is where the location is of all the amenities. As well as help us provide some forecasting for life of equipment. Um, one of the things we have, don't have right now, because all of this stuff I've come to find in our research is it has a limited life. Um, it it is designed to be there so many years and and then it'll start to fail. Um, so I believe, uh, if I recall, don't hold me to this, but I believe the estimated life. So anyway, that master plan will help play into that. It would tell us if we should have a splash pad that's riding up in the. However, like I said, I think this is, uh. Head and shoulders above and beyond the amenities we currently have for the the kids to utilize in town. Um, and I think it would be a big boom, so, um, I guess what we're looking at tonight is, uh, get this in front of council. Um, we'll be having discussions, picking this back up over the next few weeks. So if anybody has any, um, thoughts or ideas, uh, please throw them out. I will warn everyone that, uh, especially this is gonna be open to the same sort of cost overruns that we're starting speaking to. Um, so we will be have to be really limited if we're talking about adding a a bunch of amenities. We're gonna have to talk about what's gonna go away. Um, because, uh, although we do have a substantial amount of money, um, this concept and design was using all of it. Um, because the other thing you don't see here is right in front, um, is a sixty four or sixty two space parking lot. So, so that also is in there, which adds a bunch of costs, so.
LED lights, dusted on.
So the the lights are one of the things that we were kind of talking about. There's, hasn't really settled in here yet. Um, but that's, you know, some of the thoughts and ideas. Um, and primarily it's not for the play because, uh, the park is closed at at dusk. Um, however, what we were looking at was from a safety standpoint, uh, for the police department, you know, to be able to patrol the area, things like that and having some lighting would really help. So the intent is to add that in there. Like I said, we're just buttoning our heads up against the ceiling with costs.
So what kind of fencing is planned on the outside or is it? I'm just looking at material costs because I'm assuming this is all that plastic looking wood stuff.
I would assume.
So instead of composite fencing, using like chain link, that's simple, would that be cheaper than composite?
It would, it would definitely change the aesthetics.
Well, I just, you're talking about costs and although I like the aesthetics because I initially was thinking. Had a discussion, you like the old western pork concept. But instead of cost wise, that saves us.
I'm not sure what they got going here in this little corner by the wagon thing.
Oh, that circle?
Yeah, the middle, they got those posts with these little weird handle, I don't know what that.
In the middle, it it looks like a little like a ground type play area.
It does look very fun.
Oh, no.
Yeah, no, I'm talking about.
See, if you look, it's just like there's a post and then they got like these handles and like.
They look like, uh, sideways monkey bars.
Post steppers.
Climb up them.
It'd be fun, Mike.
So I don't see the net size.
My my concern, and I'm probably speaking more for Leo here, is the way that's enclosed, getting in like a stretcher. If there's a kid hurt or.
Well, I think this is all.
Underneath, okay. It's like if there was a big net thing, that looks more fun than these post steppers because I think we talked about a net.
Well, I think that's definitely something we can have further discussions on. I mean, that would be something, a minor change that wouldn't cost more heck. It might even be cheaper, to be honest with you.
Those big octagon climbing.
We'll call it a vertical net and I think you can kind of see it. Going up like ladders.
How much fun do you think that'd be at like Halloween?
I just feel like that needs to be changed.
So, and I know it was discussed about handicaps, it looks like you come up. And is it, assuming it gradually goes up, up and up to the slides and then hires my understanding of this?
Yeah, one of the main components was accessibility, um, so.
So, alright, and they're calling, okay, Resha Bridges. The white one looks different and it's hard to orientate, so let's look at it this way.
So this is Resha Bridge.
This, okay.
It's a little covered wagon.
So they're calling that a bridge? That doesn't look like a bridge.
Oh, Mike.
Attention to detail. It's it's an attention to detail thing. So like the underneath, because it looks enclosed, so if it was like more bridge like.
I do like the western theme.
I love it. I think this is gonna draw so many people.
So. Somewhere in the discussion, we're talking oil derrick. That, so there's that version. I was thinking more of the old school style from back in the day. With changing this taller slide to that type of a oil design, Derek design, would that be too much?
I I think we could look at that. I think what I'm looking at, I'm guessing what their idea here was. That when you're doing something like that and getting everybody off the ground, you need to enclose it. So to make sure there's no way for the kids to get out. Um, I think this is what their effort is there. So that's just something we need to keep in mind, um, with this is that, you know, safety first. So and I I think this is their attempt to to cover that.
So we, like, I'd like the windmill in the top, but in cost savings, I don't know that we can actually need a windmill up there. Or say, like, the rest of, like, don't worry, I like it. I just, the windmill could save some costs if we didn't have that on the top. Unless it's functioning. I mean, if it actually turned and stuff out, it'd be cool.
Well, and the other thing is, is I think that that, that's the thing that makes it kind of look like a derrick. If we do take that off, it definitely does not look like a derrick.
Okay, so if we took out the windmill side of it, just made it look like the oil derrick?
There's a fire pole off that backside.
Oh, I know.
So I I guess, uh, you know, if anybody's got any, uh, any other comments of tonight or anything you come across, uh, you know, uh, please, uh. Forward them along and, uh, we will continue to have discussions to move this project forward.
Yeah, I think we're gonna want to move pretty quick. We've had these guys on hold for a long, long time. They might be, well, they're in Florida. They might be wondering if this is ever gonna happen.
And for us to be successful, we need to get it out to bid here. Nobody will bid on it because once they get their schedule full, they're done. So it is one more reason we wanted to get in front of everybody tonight.
I think the other thing I get to want to do is figure out some place for more benches for the parents to sit. So I only see one.
Well, and we had, uh, we had, we had talked about, there's a lot of area down there, um, so that there's a lot of room around also to put in benches, and we had talked about for future expansion, um, putting in some, uh, of the shelters, uh, like we have down there, so, those are things I think that we can do, um.
Do as we're going.
Yes, and we, we can do.
Put a moat around it?
We could do that rather than.
I just really think the enclosed areas need to be gone.
What's the, um, ground material?
All sand and gravel down there.
Yeah.
That's what this is going to be?
Oh, the fall material, I'm sorry, um, it's.
I'm not sure what that is.
Engineered wood fibers.
Yeah, engineered wood fibers, and they actually compact it so that it can, you can take a wheelchair over. The other option is poured rubber, uh, poured rubber, we would, if we go to poured rubber, we have to cut the design in half, roughly, because of the cost.
I've got that, uh, rubberized mulch in New York.
That's kind of what, yeah, kind of what this is.
It's awesome, I mean, it's like.
But the other thing we did make sure is that for the future, um, that we could go in and.
I'm sure.
So if we do find some additional money.
The covered wagon, was it moved, was that the handicap like swing? I know at one point there was a discussion about.
No, I, I think so, and I'll have to touch base with their designers, what we had talked about is that the handicap swing is leaving a space for it to add it in the future. Um, one of the things we thought was, was really great, um, but, uh, yeah, I assumed it was a TP.
Swaying down.
Yeah, so it's where the TP is, um, is, but that was like a hundred and eighty thousand dollars for that one component, one piece, yeah.
Or some poles and a plastic thing rolls.
Well, it's a little more than that, so that you can get up with a wheelchair on the swing and actually swing this, swing back and forth in the wheelchair. Um, so we felt that important to have a place for that, um, but current funding, again, just doesn't quite fit that. Um, so one of the things I thought about is, and I think if we get a playground in, there's going to be some fundraising opportunities, where we can go out and get some, uh, business partners and things like that, you know, fund that and put it in.
Because once they see it, that looks good enough, use, people are way more apt to build on and help make it get better.
Oh, yeah, we could build this really super cool.
So we all felt like it was a very important component to have, especially for accessibility, um, but wanted to make, uh, leave room so that we can add that on in the future.
These belted swings here, are they higher backed?
Yes.
Good.
That was specifically a component we discussed.
What's that little round thing there on the swing?
I think it's a mixture.
Tire swing line?
Yeah.
The kids love them.
Yeah. I went and walked through the playground at the school one day when all the kids are out, and was visiting with them about what they like and don't like one day, and so that's some of why this is this way, because there were some things that, like, yeah, I don't even touch this stuff.
But they love that swing.
Yeah, this is. So if, for those of you who are not familiar with Destination Spots, Weathers Associates, they built one of these up in Spearfish, South Dakota, in the old park next to Fish Hattery. And people go from all over many states, drive up there just to go to it. Casper has, the Casper Park, certain people built out, and they're, they're becoming quite popular, and there's like, big municipalities are building like complete ocean side ship weird, like, they're quite designed.
It's all custom, everything they do is custom.
Yeah.
The other, uh, component of this is, was really important to us also is the, um, the materials, so this is all using, uh, composite materials, uh, easily, more easily come by, and things that we can purchase here locally, um, and we can do repairs ourselves. Um, so if we do have a slot or something that breaks out, then we can go and purchase the material and do that in-house to make those repairs. So that was another component of this, is not only the build itself, but us to be able to upkeep it in the future, so. Yep.
So, the Resha Bridge, if they did a wider version of this, then people's wheelchairs and handicap would fit the same.
We could definitely discuss that in our design, that, my only thing would be making sure that it's engineered safe. You know, especially when you're running that span, some of those things, so.
And then Chief Thompson could get a hydraulic lift, and we could really go crazy.
Good for him, yeah.
He said he's good for them, he's staying for it.
Yeah. I'll write a check if you give it to me.
All right, anybody got anything else?
Just maybe a wind block of some sort that can extend, uh, um, usage, some sort of wind block, I don't know. Chain link like they have at Casper's, recycled Epoz or something, put slats in there, and I don't know, sort of ten feet out or something. Just blocks some of that wind. We get more use out of it.
Well, you wouldn't have to do, like, you could do the slat at the front, so when you pull up to it, and then do a chain link on the back sides potentially.
Yeah.
When you pull up to it, you're looking at the front, you're not looking so much at the back. Yep, it could not be one way to change the cost.
Chief Thompson, just let it flow, keep the idea and let it flow.
I will, I'm the one that put this company forward.
Just let it flow.
All right, well, if anybody comes up with anything, um, you know, over the next few weeks, uh, please feel free to reach out. All right, um, if nobody has any other questions, everything we've gone over this evening. Shane, you're all free to go, so we'll move on to the handbook.
Thank you, Shane.
Yes, thank you very much, appreciate your help.
Thank you.
Still working on the sewer line.
Oh, yeah, so while, before Shane leaves, um, I just wanted to update everybody, I'm sure you've seen the ARS trucks here and all of the stuff done, so, um, we've had a unfortunate chain of events. So, uh, this summer, I'm sure everybody is aware of the basement flooded downstairs. Um, so, uh, we were trying to mitigate that, um, when we then subsequently had a sewer backup downstairs. Um, and then a week later, we had another sewer backup downstairs that also corresponded with a toilet breaking upstairs, which then all night long sent water downstairs into the sewer backup.
Just, just that morning?
Well, just the morning, but suffice it to say, it flooded more and worse.
Yes.
Um, so we've been dealing all with that, and then, um, we've really put a lot of effort into, I'm sure, uh, Janelle sent out the camera and everybody, so we had, uh, multiple cameras done down there to figure out what's going on, and what we found is that all of the plumbing under the town is old cast iron, and it is in poor, poor shape, disrepair. Um, if you watch the videos, you'll actually see debris the entire way in that, because the cast iron pipe is scaling and flaking off, and it's just catching everything along the way. Um, so the pipe compounded with just out back in the parking lot, uh, it looks like the ground is settled and we have a dip um, in the line where the line is completely underwater, and it looks like it's always underwater. Um, so that also is a found an area where stuff is collecting. Um, so we all have kind of come together and we really don't have a whole lot of other ideas, um, except for to rip that out and replace it and put a new lining. So, um, unfortunately, it is an unanticipated expense, um, but I believe, if anybody questions why, just please look at the video. Because, uh, when I, uh, watched the video, it seemed rather evident to me, um, that that was the only course of action, because we were hoping to get off earlier with, you know, either doing a lining or stuff like that, but, um, another complicating factor is, for some reason, the building itself has almost no grade. So where the line goes downstairs to the X of the building is flat, um, which is also another component of this, but we add them all together, um, the consensus was that we really had no choice but to dig it up.
Are, we're going to have to replace under the building too, right?
Yes, so it is, um, it's going to be, yes, expensive, because we're going to have to jackhammer through to get down to that. Um, but unfortunately, um, especially in that video, all of the sections that you see where the cast iron is are all under the building. At the outside of the building turns PVC, um, but underneath is all cast iron, so we don't have much choice there but to, to dig that up. And then hopefully we can fix some of the other deficiencies in there as well.
The replacement, what is that, PVC or?
PVC, so we don't know at this point in time, um, Shane's working on some, uh, I don't know what you call it, but, uh, ground studies where, um, we're looking to see the slope, um, so hopefully we'll be able to address all of these issues at the same time. Um, but that's all ongoing, and I believe, uh, Janelle called everybody to let you know what was going on and ask, uh, make sure everybody's okay with us moving forwards, so. That's, I just wanted to update everybody, um, and, uh, let everybody know that's what that's about, so. Anybody have any questions for Shane before we let him go? All right, thank you, sir, appreciate it.
Night, everybody.
Happy to.
Have a good Thanksgiving.
Yeah, you as well. All right, has everybody had an opportunity to review the handbook, proposed handbook changes? So we can do this one of two ways, um, we've got a good synopsis that the attorneys put together, um, we can go down through this, uh, item by item and discuss each one, everybody would like. Or we can open it up for any questions that anybody had, um, as they were going through there, so.
Yeah, well, alright.
I'm good with that, absolutely. Is everybody else okay with that approach?
Yeah, yeah.
Sure.
Just going with the questions? Bit of going point by point, so just to give everybody some background with this, uh, so, uh, the employee handbook has been something that's been hobbled together over years and years and years, um, and some of the stuff hasn't been touched in a long time. Um, Chief Thompson last year brought, uh, forward to my attention a couple of items in here that were really not employee friendly. Um, so, um, I agreed with him, and at that point in time, we decided this was something we wanted to tackle. Um, so it took a little while for us to get there, but, um, so I sent everybody an email out several months ago saying that I was going to start working on this. Um, I've worked on the, the item, uh, we've had all the department heads involved working through this, and what you find here is a, a collaboration of everybody's thoughts on each of these items, um, so i- it was definitely a, a group effort uh, to put this together and really try to create an environment that is, uh, employee friendly and inviting to some of our, uh, potential employees, um, because we all have struggled to bring in um, uh, employees over the last few years, and we think that this will bring us more in line with employment practices, uh, out there at the moment, as well as hopefully, uh, be that deciding factor for some of our, uh, candidates, so. Uh, with that, I guess, let's just kind of go through and, uh, we'll, uh, look at each of the individual, uh, questions and concerns that everyone can ask.
We're going to go through the summary one or the whole thing?
Uh, so, uh, my thought was, is, I thought we were going to just go through questions, so.
Okay.
Basically, um, everyone will just kind of discuss the questions that you may have with the document, um, anything that, you know, we do decide to change, and then we'll, uh, just so everybody knows, we're really looking at the meat and potatoes. So there are some formatting issues, there's some grammatical errors that we found, um, but that's really not our focus tonight, we'll get this back to the attorneys after we all come, uh, uh,
I, yeah.
Look, go through it and, and we'll address those, so really, we're looking for the, the meat and potatoes, the items in here, so.
Okay.
Okay, yeah, so let's start.
I'll start.
All right, how about it?
Okay, um, the, when we start there with the pay scale structure on the, uh, where we went from three to two needs improvement in order to be eligible for a step, step up. Um, how many, so, I guess my question is, is how many steps are there? So if I don't qualify for two, are there only five?
No, so, the, what this is regarding is, um, the, uh, evaluations. So an employee evaluation, if you receive two bad evaluations, wouldn't you be eligible for the next?
Two bad evaluations, not two things that are wrong, but two bad evaluations. That does, that didn't read that way.
This, so, on our evals, if an employee gets a U or an unsatisfactory, they wouldn't be eligible. If they have two areas on their eval that needs improvement by this new policy, they also wouldn't be available. I'm pretty sure it was three before we started.
Yeah, it was three.
It, it was.
Three areas of need improvement, they wouldn't get their step, but if they had two, they could get a step, but this, the way it's written now, it went from three to two, so essentially, uh, one employee can only have one area they need improvement or they won't get a raise. By the way, the three, it says two or more, so if an employee gets two needs improvements on need out, they're not eligible.
They're not eligible.
Because if they've got three areas they need improvement on, they're not eligible.
Well, that is two, that, that's, I originally thought we would have three, but somebody told me the other day that it's always been two.
The, the old one says three.
What page are you?
The one we signed back when the stepping grade policy was three, wasn't it?
Right, that's my understanding from what I see, and now it went to two.
So I guess the, the biggest question I have is, I was comfortable being able to give an employee two needs improvements, and they still get a raise, but if they get that third one, they don't get the raise. Now you can only give them one needs improvement in their entire job, because if they get the second one, they don't get a raise. So I'm not, I, to me, I think three is more fair for employees, but because that's the way our original stepping grade was, so this kind of changed that, so I don't know.
Well, that's why I'm asking, how many, how many areas are you looking at? Are you looking at ten?
So for a fire employee, would be, oh my god, I got.
Well, just rough.
About a dozen.
About a dozen, so basically twenty percent, fifteen, twenty percent? That if they don't?
If it was at three, yeah.
If it's, if it's at three, it's close, a little closer to thirty, but whatever.
Well, I guess I'd do about.
Well, it's about a fourth, it's about a fourth, it would be twenty-five percent.
But if two needs improvement out of a dozen items.
Except there is, and this was where my question really came in, is there, is the ability on the part of the supervisor to say we're going to go ahead and give you your stepping grade? And I think it does give you some discretion.
Set in extraordinary circumstances.
Well, but I guess, I, I, I don't know, you know, maybe if I've got somebody working for me that's got three areas they need improvement, I'm probably not going to be able to have a camper.
Well, I agree, I agree with three, but.
But if there are even two, I'm going to.
Two to me.
Because hopefully you're taking care of those during the year.
Right.
You know, so that when it comes time for the evaluation, that they have done them, it's not like I'm going to wait like a year and say, but if they haven't improved those areas, then to me, I think that's reasonable.
I just wasn't sure.
I mean, changed from what we signed back when the stepping grade policy was put into place with three, why did it go to two? What was the reasoning for that? Because the original stuff we signed back a year ago, I'm almost positive said three.
But I, I don't think that's, I don't think two's unreasonable as long as they know about it ahead of time, and they got a chance to improve those areas.
That's true.
If they don't, then, you know, maybe they don't deserve it.
Yeah, they're annuals, because these are, these are based on an annual eval.
Right, right.
This is where I, I'm in favor of two, because I do a semi-annual at July, but the annual is in January. So July gives them six months to improve to January, which Januaries is what I use for.
I'll be brutally honest with you, I have thirty employees and I don't have time to do two or three of them a year, I wouldn't do anything else. Because it takes me, it'll take me a good part of a month to do thirty of them accurately and fairly.
But if you had somebody that wasn't doing something, I'm sure you would quit that right away, right?
Typically.
Typically, but the sergeants do these for me here.
I do, yeah, so, let me clarify, I do them here, but the sergeants.
I believe that this isn't, I mean, set in stone, we can change it, but I thought it came up from a suggestion of Chief Thompson.
So Chief Thompson, let's say John Smith has three U's.
Oh, that's a U, they're.
Or, no, at the, what is it, three?
Needs improvement.
Needs improvement, sorry, three needs improvements at the sixth month, but yet. But yet they have improved by the time they come to their yearly one, then they're good.
Cause it came as a suggestion.
Or do you say, well, you know, six months ago, you.
Well, that's, that's what he said. Only when he does the annual one.
Yeah.
The time.
Yeah.
Once we said it.
So for instance, I have 18 categories within my eval. There's, uh, one of them is traffic enforcement. Is we don't have any traffic provision. It's a public safety thing. I have asked gently for everybody to do three stops in their 12-hour shift as an average. Doesn't mean they're gonna get it done every day. Cause like we have shoot day and we're all tied up in Park Street for 18 hours. Obviously we can't trap. So I'm looking at the average. Three is nothing. So when we're the staff, that's, you know, three, six, nine, 12. It's 18 stops, which we fire at a minimum because public safety on the traffic side is important. So if we have three, they can be unsatisfactory and say, oh yeah, I'm gonna do 10 stops this month. And if we have three, that, that's room for others. That's why I looked at two. Cause I want, I want them to make sure they have to do a stop. Now, now his evals are gonna be different because he has a different job description.
Like, I was just curious why I went from three to two, cause I thought we were all happy with.
It, you can blame me. Sure. We discussed this when we, we discussed on Mike's suggestion changes. Oh, you weren't here. You, you were gone that day, weren't you? No? Yeah. It's definitely, yeah. Yeah, Mike was gone, but. But anyway, I mean, suffice it to say, for, to me, it doesn't matter one way or the other. Um, it, it's really how you guys are using that is what is based at what point in time. How should that be personally withheld their, their step increase? And understand that this is for that year. So, you know, this is that one step. So, um, the next year you'd be up and eligible again. So. But it's whatever.
You'd answer, ask a question that wasn't quite answered. There's 10 steps and each year they're eligible for one step. They can't just jump.
They can't jump two steps.
And, but there are some exceptions. So if.
Well, they're in there.
Yeah. They're all in there and I understood that. Right? Yeah. I wasn't too concerned about that. I was just, I wanted to make sure that we weren't penalizing people. But by the same token, if somebody's not doing their job, I didn't want to reward them. That's, that, does that make sense? Um, is there, if I just keep going?
Okay.
Yes. I got, I got something quick on this. Uh, is there a way we could have the departments have their own, what, three works for one and two works for the other? Or do we need a full? A broad brush on that city.
That would make it really complicated.
Okay. All right.
Cause then it's not fair across the board.
I just throw it out there.
Cause I'm, I'm kinda, I wasn't sure why we did this two thing, but I also believe that it should be, as much as we can, this policy should stay as uniform as it can be.
Six years ago, that probably would work because there was a line in the parking lot between fire and PD.
Correct.
But that isn't happening. And so my people talk to his, his people talk to me, my people talk to his. So we want it.
We gotta keep it. We got.
Okay. Second place, I had a question was, is it appears if I'm reading this right, that you can bank up to 240 hours of vacation time.
What page are you on?
Which, well, it's on this, if you go to this summary one, it's like the second. I'm kind of going.
Okay.
The second page. Anyway. Never. I think that's a, in my opinion, that's a little excessive. That's like, that's like six weeks that you're banking.
In today's world.
But, but, but I don't, let me butt, okay? I don't have a problem with it if, but I think there should be something where you have to use, say half of whatever you get for a year. Like if I get four, if I get 80, I have to use four in that year.
It needs to take some time off.
Well, the way this is, is that's a maximum cap. So you will have to use time to stay underneath that cap or you won't accrue any time.
Well, I, I, I guess.
If I, if I save my vacation up to 240 per this, on my next paycheck, I'm not gonna accrue any vacation time. So I'm essentially giving my vacation.
No, I, I understand that. But it is what I'm saying is in order to get the 240, you ought to be taking at least half of your vacation every year. So in other words, if I'm this new employee and I get 80, I have to take 40. I gotta take a week.
But what if we just have a baby and he wants to take his time for, e- e- extend almost his paternity leave and use that vacation time?
Well.
I have an employee do that.
And, well, I, I mean.
It would take three years never using a new employee, starting year one, taking three years to reach 240 if they never used any time. And on year fours, when you get bumped up to the 100.
On your, on your second year, you get 96.
Yeah, it was 80, 90.
It goes 80, 96, 136, 176.
I don't think we want to mess with this. I, one thing about Evansville that we need to keep in mind. We will never have the money to pay what Casper, County, Mills Glenrod pays. So if we can provide extra little recruitment and retention benefits such as extra vacation time. Cause we can never, Casper's a $200 million agency. I, I can go be a street cop for more work for, as a street cop for more than you pay me as a chief in Casper.
I'm sure.
So that's part of why this is the way it is.
Well, and maybe.
I guess my concern, I'm like, I don't have a problem with the 240, okay? But my concern is, is that you need to take some time off every year.
However, I don't think we should be able to tell employees when they decide to take their time. Cause it's my, I feel like I should take it whenever I want. Right.
Take it during the year sometime.
But what if, I don't, what if I don't want to do that? What if I'm saving up for something, you know what I mean? Big.
Well, this may be a mute point because yes, like you're saying, when you first start, if you don't take for the first two years, you wouldn't be taking time. But once you get there, you have to take the time.
Right.
So once you hit that or get anywhere close to that 240, you have to take 96 hours.
I guess my concern is, is that people take time off and aren't just banking all the vacation time. Cause they all need, uh, you need a week away at least.
At the end of the day, we can't force people to take their vacation time. Not really. I mean, you can lower the number.
Every company I've ever gotten a paycheck from, I had to take at least half of my vacation.
We're not a company.
Uh, but I'm just saying, it's, so don't.
And if you force me to take it, I'll find somewhere else to work. That's what they're gonna say. That, like, we can't force people to do it. Right. It's a benefit.
But wouldn't that also be, sorry, I'm coming late to the game. Just got off work, but wouldn't that be kind of infringing on their rights to tell employees when they can and cannot do something or when they can and cannot take time or they have to take time? Like I've worked in a lot of professional agencies as well over the last 18 years and exactly what you just said, if someone is telling me what I can and cannot do, or when I can and cannot take time, that's going to make me feel like I'm
I think.
Being infringed upon.
I'm, I'm listening to what he's saying. He doesn't have a problem with the 240. Correct me if I'm wrong. He's saying that, you did say you seem, that seems like a lot, but you want our employees to use their vacation time so they have off time and they have that done.
That's what I'm saying. That's what I'm saying. I don't have an issue with the 240. I don't have an issue with the 240 because over a period of time, you're gonna, you're gonna get to 240 probably. But I think, I guess, um, my, my opinion is, is you ought to take half a year every year. Now, if I want to bank it, cause I know that, you know what, in two years, I'm going to Thailand for a month. You know, whatever, that I can plan for that. And I don't see why, if that's the case, that I can't apply for an exception. You know?
Well, there's, there can't be exceptions. You can't make special rules for one person to another.
Well.
It's gotta be universal across the board.
I know.
And where I'm getting at with this is if you get 200 hours in there, that means however much you accrue in a year, you have to take every year.
But.
So that is.
Taking vacation in three years. So how productive am I after a while?
Uh, that's all I'm saying.
I kind of think that's the employer's choice though.
I agree.
I, I, I understand what you're saying. Take time off. Get it mentally.
Like my millennials want to take all their time off and me, I, I won't tell you how much time I spend here, but I'm okay with it. Like, so.
I understand.
Yeah.
I, I, that's my, that's my only concern. Don't have a problem with it to afford. I'm just.
Take time off. Be mentally there.
Take a little bit. No. And maybe, maybe you need to be rid of somebody for a week. You know, cause it's, so, you know, I used to work at this place and they said, you get four weeks of vacation a year or you get two when you go and two when your boss goes. You know, so.
I'm understanding, but it is important for them to take time off. I'm not disagreeing with that. So to go with the conversation, creating, having a incentive for them to use their time. Is that what you're asking?
Something. I, I don't know.
You don't want to get into forcing, cause that's gonna alienate. But if we incentivize for them to use it prior to reaching the maximum bank, I think that would go over better with the employees.
Well, I think it already is because it's a use it or lose it kind of thing.
Cause Chad said it a minute ago, once they get to the 200.
To the 240. Now you've got no choice.
Every, every hour of vacation, whatever, you know, wherever you fall in this, you're gonna have to take that much vacation in that next year or you're just giving it back to the town. Every patient.
Let me, let me add another piece to this is that 95% of our employees have been here a long time and are all going to be.
At the 240.
Not at the 240 yet because currently it's 196, but with, there with quickly. So, um, it really would only pertain to a brand new employee.
You know what? I'm gonna sleep very good tonight. I, it's not, doesn't bother me that much. So, um.
What we're doing. Anything, anybody have questions?
Because part of where we're not consistent is your supervisor or the mayor have the right to tell you you can't go. According to this.
As far as vacations, right?
Yeah, that you can't go.
So I can give you some insight on that. So since we went to a combination apartment in 2012, I have never had to deny anybody's vacation.
Okay.
It's for emergency purposes.
It's for emergency purposes.
Okay.
Casper, when they had all the crazies after the George Floyd protest, they canceled everybody's vacation and said, thou shalt work.
But I, I think that that should be in there because there could be an emergency where we have to cancel a vacation time that somebody else told.
Sure.
But I can tell you.
But you can't have everybody take a vacation at the same day and time.
Correct. Correct. That's the other side.
And if I wrote good, I had written ahead of time, I wrote good.
Everybody tries to align their vacations. So. In the office.
Help control this.
And even my guys are, I mean, we're small as far as full-time guys go. They, they all talk to each other. That we're gonna never have a lapse in the coverage of the town as far as emergency services go. So they actually make it easy on me. And I don't have to go to them and say, well, you guys all can't come the same day off if it doesn't work out. So they, they help out a lot.
But we have to have this.
We do. We have to have it. Cause you never know.
And then I guess there must be a really good reason why you can accumulate 450 hours of sick. Right. Same thing. Case Deja gets pregnant again.
Well, that's, that's in line with short, it's in line with FMLA and short-term disability.
Okay. All right.
And I can. As I said, to start off, this was a collaborative effort and a lot of this was driven by you all.
Sure.
Please feel free to chime in wherever.
I didn't want to be stuck on there.
No.
And. Generally speaking, I had a, with the bereavement time for family, awesome. For a friend.
The significant other factor.
Yeah. You're.
Because Wyoming doesn't recognize common law.
We don't recognize common law.
But you may have somebody that's.
Okay, but yeah, I consider that. I consider that's.
You look at that as family.
I look at that as family. I mean.
In the legal world of policy.
Okay.
Friend is what they're, by the law, the insurance people in Wyoming, they're still a friend. They're not family. So when it comes to lawyers and, you know, you have somebody challenging policy.
So, but if I come in and say, you know what, one of my old golf buddies died and I'm gonna really miss the money he's been paying me. So I'm gonna need at least a week off. That counts. I don't know. You're gonna be able to tell me no because he's a friend? Can we come up with a different?
I mean, it's a valid point, but I don't know.
And he's not wrong in asking that question.
Why can't we change it to significant other or, uh, or common law?
Well, we, we all know what the intent was. Let's just throw it back at the attorneys to come up with a bit of.
That's what, that's what I'm saying. I, I, I don't have a problem. I mean, every day.
There you go.
And Candace can probably tell you, everybody handles.
Fam- family or domestic partner.
Well, some people. You don't have to pay lawyers. Just ask me.
Yeah.
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 No, domestic partner.
Yeah, that sounds, yeah. That sounds like it's, it's getting the intent.
It's just the intent.
Uh, it's, it's, now that you've said what you've said, I absolutely see where that could get in the way.
Yeah.
Every person that dies is my.
You need a pen here.
All of my Facebook friends. You know, when I live with them.
Hard to get rid of it.
It's page 33, sorry.
Yeah.
No, I'm gonna breathe.
It, it'll just make, clean it up a little bit.
Yeah.
Okay. That's all I'm saying.
Okay.
Okay. And then the next part that I had a question. I, oh, one thing I was gonna mention, where you guys offer paid for health insurance day one. That's got to attract a lot of people, cause that's awesome.
Well, it did at least in the railway here.
It doesn't.
We're trying to get it towards after. It's. My world is hard to recruit in. Not as, his is as hard, but I mean, it helps, but it's.
But poor PW is.
Well, in our current environment, they don't get it for six months.
Yeah.
So.
Right. But when you get, when they get that.
I, I lost, yeah. Part of that change is because I've lost a candidate.
See, and I think that's, I think it's an awesome deal.
But it does help, but I.
We do run the risk of some potential claims and things for somebody who doesn't work out. I feel like that's the risk we just need to take. It's just a, a benefit that people expect.
Right.
What did the insurance tell us that by their own policy it's?
30 days.
Yeah.
It's the first, first.
It's, it's unusual. It's the first, the first day of the mud falling.
And, and to, to Chief Thompson's point, what we were trying to do with some of this is really kind of do those things that really don't have a large financial impact on the town. But are those perks and benefits to help us entice new applicants?
It's an awesome work. Because otherwise is what people have to do is they gotta buy Cobra and Cobra is extremely expensive. The other question I had was, is education assistance. And basically for, if I'm understanding this right, for every $2,000 that we provide, they have to just agree to stay for a year.
Yeah. Or reimburse the town.
Or reimburse the town. Does there need to be something in there? Maybe you don't want them here anymore.
Sorry, remember, when the contract we did for this, which predicated a lot of this, that's why it was, you get fired.
I thought we had addressed that in the document.
It's kind of in there. Yeah. It's kind of in there. The.
Well, we actually have a contract that'll go along with this. So this is just basically what outlines the employee handbook. And then there's a contract that the legal team put together that the employee has to sign to.
And they don't know what they'll say in there, that if they're terminated or they quit or whatever.
Whatever. They gotta pay. It comes out of the final check. Yeah, I think that's, that's where the 240 hours of vacation.
They get you that way.
Let's see.
I'm gonna get a job here.
He's got a CBL. Your application goes. Your application got looked at.
We've already talked about that. The other thing I had was is over social media. Cause it's huge. I mean, every.
Not everybody.
That was what I was saying. But anyway. Are we violating anybody's First Amendment rights by telling them that they cannot, cannot do something on social media? Other than, other than using, they cannot use the town's social media.
There's case law established about. Employees, what, what they can and say, what they can and can't say on social media to include their own profiles.
Okay.
So if it deals with anything with their employment, absolutely can.
Correct, yeah, I understand that.
And this was defined, uh, this was something we didn't have at all, but, um, this was created by the attorneys. Um, and, uh, as Chief Thompson's had alluded, uh. There's different areas. So that's why it's meant, said here is that this is a base minimum individual, uh, departments may have.
Okay.
Great. So that online class that took about six months of my time, I spent two weeks doing it.
Okay, alright. No, I was just, I just wanted to make sure. What, what is savings clause?
Savings clause?
Yeah. Says this clause is a catch-all in nature and provides reassurance.
Sitting last page.
It's under additions and it says savings clause. I guess I.
Sounds like.
I figure it must be some kind of legal thing.
Lawyer, yeah. Catch-all. Some sort of catch-all.
Exactly what it is.
Yeah.
Is that all you had, Phil, or did you have?
I'm almost there.
Okay.
I got.
Not trying to rush you.
Nope, I'm fine. Um, I do like the change that's made to the forty hours for the non-police and fire people. Instead, I think before it was eighty. It's gonna change to forty, is that correct? It was, or, what, if they were overtime for two weeks?
Yeah, and that was old, old language.
Yeah.
But, yeah.
I like the new language.
We had to adopt another policy in there. Yeah.
Then. What, do we have anything? Built into our pay structure for inflation?
So that's part of the reason why we have this step process. So last year we tackled the employee wages. We took that out and had a study done. Prior to that, um, there were some steps within police and fire. Um, but there was no other mechanism for any type of advancement raises for the rest of the town. So we incorporated the whole step, uh, plan, which provides for annual step increases. Now, that whole plan is meant to be revisited every few years and adjusted. So that it stays up with the times. It's not a stagnant document.
Cause Mike, wh- when was that adopted?
Yeah.
Of this year?
Yeah, we've not even gone through our first raises yet. So when we go through the budget, um, cycle here in the spring. We will be talking about giving those first step increases.
Okay.
Cause it was last April.
Yeah.
So.
Okay.
Six days, months ago.
Yeah, okay. So are the step increases built in that this is what they are and they don't change?
Yep. Now, granted that we adjust as council for inflation.
Okay.
So that barring council adjustment. And if you look at the actual study that was produced, it said, that is said right in there. This is not a doc, stagnant document. It is dependent upon the town to review that every few years and make those type of adjustments.
Okay, cause my, my concern was twofold. One of them is, is if we're giving somebody a step increase, that's kinda because you're doing a good job. But if it doesn't include inflation, then basically I'm, I may be going backwards. Cause I don't know about everybody else's groceries, but mine went from five hundred to a thousand. And.
Self-checkout, that fixes that.
Yeah.
It's a joke.
He was poking the bear on that one.
I never thought of that. So I have to quit doing delivery.
The mechanism you're talking about, Phil, is basically the town, council providing colts.
Okay.
So it's a cost of living adjustment. And when we provide a cost of living adjustment, that is across the board to the entire pay structure.
Perfect.
So, um, that would change.
I am done.
That was, that was a really big part of that. And I thought that was an excellent thing when that whole thing was put together. That was, that was a really.
What you'll find out is that the, the way things have been done in the past created compression here at the town. So in the past, raises were given as a, here's a quarter, here's fifty cents, whatnot. And what that does is between the employee and the supervisor, um, the employee goes up more than the supervisor does. Um, because it's a fixed amount. Um, so that was creating compression where some of our people, um, were dangerously close, um, to the people that report to them. So my suggestion and, uh, spelled out also in part of this is that that's not done any further. So when colts are done in the future, they should be done by a percent, not by a fixed.
Perfect.
And that'll keep that separation.
Fully on board.
Okay. What other questions do we have? This is for council primarily, cause the rest of us have all kinda really beat this, this horse multiple times.
And then, and then, yeah. We did some other things to it.
Almost have.
Nobody.
Yeah, I think we're good.
So currently the handbook has been adopted by ordinance. So we will have to present an ordinance to. I don't know if we've spoken as a good word.
Well, yeah, what we'll be doing is repealing the ordinance and then adopting this by resolution.
So then we, do we have to do three readings?
No, that's, that's the point of this is that when we started down this road, realizing that it was done by ordinance, I really reached out to the attorneys. Tried to figure out why. Um, and I didn't really get anything good because these types of documents need to change frequently. Um, especially in today's, so, uh, Janelle and I just had a review, um, with our insurance agent about insurance and cyber insurance. Well, the cyber insurance market is requiring these policies, these things in there in order to maintain insurance. And by doing this as an ordinance and requiring three readings, it's very counterproductive for us to be able to keep this document up to date. Um, so that was one of the things the attorney's office suggested is that we repeal this as an ordinance and pass it as a resolution. So then moving forward, any changes, updates that we need to be done can be done by resolution by council rather than ordinance.
And you always have to do it.
Evolution, I, in tracking histories of government, so like you have Wyoming's social, association municipalities, they give recommendations. So way back in the day, recommendation was ordinances, but as time goes and, you know. Your legal mind is different than, you know, vice versa, and that has evolved.
So that will be coming here, uh, in the near future. Council meetings. So we'll be usually have a budget meeting. Yeah, late April, early May. So we've gotta do it ahead of time. That, uh. Cause we have to do three readings to pass that.
Right.
Um, and that's gonna be passed, uh, by the last meeting in June. So, um, so.
Pass what?
Budget budget.
Oh.
So, uh, the department heads and I will be working on budgets starting in the next month. Um, in two months.
I'll give you February.
Yeah, two months, um, time, because we've gotta really go through and.
Six months.
Hash out a lot of stuff, um, and, and really get so that we're bringing council a feasible budget. Um, not just a laundry list of wishes, um, then it puts that burden on council to dwindle down. Um, so we all work together under our anticipated revenues and create the budget to bring to council. Um, and it's been fairly successful, um, the last couple of years since we did that. Years prior, um. My first year, we went Tuesday through Friday till midnight, one night, two thirty tomorrow. Um, because basically what budget was, is it was a, a wish list from the departments of here's every, I'm gonna put everything in here. Somebody actually told me this story. I won't, uh, point out who it was. Somebody told me that their department head said that creating a budget is, we put down everything we would ever want and then it's council's decision to decide. Which to me isn't productive. Um, council doesn't know the ins and outs and workings of each of the departments and day-to-day operations. So what is it our place to say you need two shovels instead of four? Um, so what we try to do now is really hash this out, kinda like we did the employee handbook. Um, hash this out amongst ourselves, come up with a viable budget, um, and a budget that is balanced. So that is also a kicker and a very important piece to me, um, is that we do present a balanced budget. Um, because previously we've gone in, uh, well. Two years ago was the first balanced budget in sixteen years, um, that was ever approved. Um, so to me, that's part of our job is to make sure that we are not spending more than revenue brings in. So I will always push for a balanced budget. Um, it's better to have money at the end of the year than we can allocate to special projects than to be coming up, no, going in knowing we're gonna be short. So, um, so that's kinda that reasoning. So what we'll do is we'll have, uh, a meeting in, uh, April. Um, more than likely that we'll be presenting that budget to council and have the opportunity to go through each of the departments.
Well, it's a workshop, but.
Yes.
Yeah, we have just like this.
Yep, exactly.
So, anyway, I'm sorry I asked so many questions.
No, you're good. That's, that's why we're here. So. Alright, well, if anybody has anything else, that's it. Um.
No other questions?
No other questions?
We covered it pretty thoroughly.
What, you missed? Can I steal these?
Yes, you may, yes.
I can do it in five minutes or less. So, um, so basically we started with road projects. Um, so I don't know if you're aware.
It's gonna line a budget.
It's come in three hundred thousand dollars.